We're getting a couple of minutes over in about 60 seconds.
Okay, so for those of you who don't know, there are a couple of new faces. I'm Jessa Madowski and I'm the Chair of the Board. And today, our meeting is not going to be a presentation like it has been in the past at some meetings. Today, we are getting together to talk about what we want to submit to the EPA in terms of questions, comments, concerns we have on the draft RI that we had a presentation on last week, and on the proposal for changing the boundaries of the Superfund site. So those are the two things that the EPA has said that we can submit questions and comments to them. That's pretty, I mean, that's pretty broad. That's pretty much everything that's happened right now. So it's basically up to us to come up with what we want to submit. If we have requests/ demands for the Chemtronics site, we need to figure out what those are now and we need to get those in by the end of the month. So we need to be, that's why we're having this meeting, is to figure out what we want to know more about or what we might be requesting. Does that make sense to everybody? Everybody's on the same page? Okay. So while Amy's working on logistics over there, we're child care. Does anybody have any questions for me before we get started?
How is the process tonight? Are we going to just talk about ideas or are we going to talk about them and like vote on things? Or are we going to try to write up a final thing today?
We'll see where we get to in the process. It'll be partly dependent on what sort of things we have. If we have one issue and it's only one thing, maybe we'll get all the way to having a complete, you know, formal write-up and then we can vote on it and that'd be fabulous. If not, we may have to do the voting via email. So that is another possibility, that we could vote via email for the CAG members. Remember, the CAG members have a vote on it. So we could theoretically potentially have an emergency board meeting as well later in the month if we need to go through that. So that's another option, because we do have enough time.
So can I ask something? We're going to like take a position on, I mean, there's not a whole lot of things that are like in a position, but I could be wrong, but I guess there is.
Well, there's, this is the draft RI, so we can ask questions for clarification. We can say we want more information about this that wasn't provided. We could say we want more testing on this that wasn't done. I mean, there's sort of an infinite amount of stuff that we could ask for. How much of that will get, is reasonable to ask or it may be very debatable. But, so there's a lot that we could do with it. It's sort of wide open to our questions, comments, and concerns. Where that goes from there is not entirely up to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was thinking, it sounds like we could almost, everybody has concerns. It could just be put into one document and it's not really something we have to vote on?
Well, this would be, if we submitted as a CAG, this would be something that would need to be voted off by the members of the CAG, because it would be something that would be a submission, an official thing from the CAG. If you personally want to say something to the EPA, we don't, you know, it's allowed. You can vote on that, right? You know, you can do that by yourself. But if we as the CAG are making an official position statement, we need to vote on it. Yes?
Refresh my memory from last meeting, were there any questions captured for which they were not provided satisfactory answers or answers were opening? I'll get back with you later type stuff. Do you remember anything about any of that?
I'm looking at the minutes when we get to the questions part.
I remember a couple of things. One thing was, is there, I guess in the form of a question, was there enough information for actually removing or for declaring that the upper part is not contaminated? Is there enough sampling that's been done in the upper part to say that it's okay to remove it from the site? And another thing that we've talked about was the land use, the type of land use that they can use up there or do up there. And I'm raised a concern about if they increase any impervious surface up there or do any land use that could change the amount or increase the amount of water running off of that property. It could increase the hydraulic pressure in the groundwater, which could push this stuff out of the lower parts faster or just do something different.
Like you change the potential. Yes, did you have a question?
Does anyone know if anyone is looking at, and or is looking at that property to buy? Stuff is going on over there.
What property to buy?
The ones I give you from your cottage.
You mean the part that's delisted, that they're pointing to delist? Okay.
Has anybody checked with Ken Lancher lately to see what the status is as far as that property is concerned, which looks right on the end of this property?
What we were told, and Ken Lancher.
Oh, that's down the bottom here, isn't it? There's some mulch or something down there.
Yes, plus there was, say, one time, the advertisement for hiring. I thought, oh, well, we're hiring now, okay. But I really am not checking that out.
So you're not talking about the back alley? You're talking when you drive down the road, there's the plane changes.
It's up front.
It's not part of the site, it's just right in front of us.
Right, I mean, that's not something that's within the boundaries.
Right.
So it's not part of the site.
Well, if you're concerned about where water's going, it's going to be one way or the other.
Right, but I mean, we can't, we can't formally make any comments to the EPA about it because it's not within their purview, there's nothing they can do.
But we can stay on top of it to see if it can be.
Sure, sure, we can, and we, there were questions last time about where that plume is and has it exceeded the boundaries of the site. And they are watching that plume and it has not at this point exceeded the boundaries of that site. And until it exceeds the boundaries of that site, EPA will do nothing about it. So they are treating, they are removing waters, they're trying to prevent it from moving off the site, but.
Anybody ever come to any of these meetings from the Wyper Alliance, from the other company across the street?
Not, nobody who's ever introduced themselves to me is from the Wyper Alliance. Has anybody else talked to anybody who's identified themselves in that way?
There was an email from a Tony from the group.
Yeah, he's on our list.
He's on our email list. I haven't heard anything, so.
Yeah, so there is someone from the Wyper Alliance on the email list requesting to be, so has been notified of these meetings.
What's that?
Jerry? I have no idea.
So do people who have just refurbished the facility as you go into Warrenville Center?
The Owen Plant.
Oh, the Owen Plant. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's the White Forest.
Okay, Jerry had a question or a comment?
I have a comment and a question too. The facility, you're talking about the Wyper company?
Yeah.
They came from over at Square D Plant and it was a contaminated site over there, really bad where they were at. So I don't think they'd be putting themselves in a bad position like the second time, you know, to land here, but they might not know it either if they are something there. So that's just a comment. But my question is, we've had several good meetings on the responsible parties where we've asked when the attorney was here and there was a lot of good questions and you took minutes on it. Instead of reinventing the wheel tonight, we ought to go back and collect all those questions, concerns that we jotted down and make sure that we get our questions in there and our concerns in there, because they never answered clearly on a lot. And even at the last presentation, after the meeting, I found out that the company that's right out of the gate on the left, it's got the ponds, those ponds, they've never investigated them either on that property. So that's something that would be interesting. But I just don't think we need to reinvent the wheel on a lot of this stuff that we might come out tonight with. We've already asked a lot of good questions.
Okay, well, we can go over the list of questions that has been asked, but we do need to come up with a formal list of this is what we are submitting to EPA, because just because they were asked previously doesn't mean that we necessarily want to or will be submitting them to the EPA, because that was not the spirit in which they were necessarily submitting. So we need to go through those and decide if we want them. Some of them may not be necessary anymore and some of them may be highly relevant. And there are some that are still unanswered. So do we want to at this point go over the list of the questions? Can you do that, Amy, from the notes?
I probably can.
Do we want a first take roll?
Maybe we could introduce each other too.
Okay, well, let's do that all really quickly and that concern is an introduction. So if you want to, so I'm Jessa, I already mentioned that. I'm the Chair of the Board and I live in Swananoa, so that's why I'm concerned about this. I'm also a conservation biologist by profession, so I'm concerned about that as well from a conservation biology background.
I'm Amy, I'm also on the Board, serve as the Secretary of Board and apologize that I have to leave early this evening, about 7:30.
I'm Wei Manfen, I'm Vice Chair, I live over in Bee Tree. I'm just concerned that it's from a humanitarian and health perspective that it could impact us adversely. Want to give you a cleanup?
I'm Vicki Collins, I'm retired chemistry professor from Warrenville Center. I've been coming to meetings for a long time, twenty-some years on this issue. And I live in Swananoa too, so I'm interested in all this.
And you're on the Board?
I'm Adam Tripp, I live in Asheville, I'm a workhorse. Take it down.
I'm Ray Knopf, sit up, I can't, I must hear.
I'm sorry, it's Ray.
Living in Swananoa, K and O P, I live in Swananoa, just by Baby's Road.
Okay. I am Peggy Knopf. My family's lived in Swananoa for a while, we're just here to listen. Okay, great.
I'm Sean Moore, I live over at Warrenville Center College and I work in soil and water
I'm Mark Santos, I work on public operation confusion and a little website. And I'm concerned because we have a small farmstead nearby that we live at and obviously the site used for not to damage the rocks in the future.
I'm Sherri Burnin and I live right down the road. I gave you my neighbor Joanne Morrison, who was active in this area. And so she told me about it and I was interested. I'm not in any position to think of any questions, because I have no background.
Okay.
I just wanted to just be here, it's right in front of me.
Right, okay, yeah.
Could you say your name again?
Sherri Burnin, S-H-E-R-R-Y.
I'm glad you're here.
Yeah.
You said it again, right?
This is my name.
Yeah, that's nice.
I'm Jerry Hensel, born and raised in Swananoa. And I have not been, I am proud to be a CAG member, but I have not been in attendance as other things crop up. But the bottom line is that really appreciate all the work that has gone into every part of this issue. And still wanting to be sure that those folks who are over there in Swananoa, that they realize that all of this is going on and all of this is part of their community. And if there's ever anything that we can do to help in that communication, that we do so, and reach out for each other. Because that's the reason I'm asking questions about the Wyper folks and about the Ken Lancher up in Boca Co, Bristol and so forth and so on. But that if one of us, though, we may not be able to come to every meeting, that we are a part of the group and that we can certainly reach other people too, keep them informed and involved. And so as I'm doing this and winding down, do we have somebody that's going to cover this with the Blackwater News?
Get something together?
Would be great, would be great. And that don't mean everybody can read.
The Blackwater Press?
Yeah, thank you.
Doesn't come out much at work.
Mountain Express or the Blackwater News.
Oh, yeah. And if they're very interested in what's going on, but I find you have to keep encouraging them. Because, oh, yeah, thanks.
Do you have anyone specific?
Yes, the empty. We'll talk, we'll check.
Okay.
I'm Steve Hensel, just here tomorrow.
Okay, great.
I'm Jerry Rice and I live about in Cannon. The big issue that I feel very proud to be a part of is Buncombe County. We're all a community. And the concern that I have, I think, comes from the last meeting where the Altona folks expressed concern about how long this project might be here. And the implications that they really couldn't say how far this might reach in the future and what the future might hold for the river, actually, how much might get to the river. So when you look at this, you can sound from Swananoa, but it's going to affect a lot of people down the river and if something happens bad. So hopefully it don't, but as a concerned citizen, it don't matter where we live in public county, we better be concerned, because this is a big, big deal. And we appreciate all of the opportunity to.
Okay, so that's our roll. We'll, maybe other people will come in, sometimes people arrive late, we'll add them in. Amy, do you want to bring up the questions that we have had in the past?
Yeah, so going back to the last meeting, a number of these questions were more informational or factual in nature. So I can, I'll kind of go through each of these that I had from our last meeting, but just to see if they prompt anything for us. But I think quite a few of them won't be quite on point with what we're looking at. So the first question was, what are the conditions under which the surface water sampling should have been done? Asking about high flow versus low flow. And there was an answer to that. Second question was, what differences do you see in the water samples comparing wet and dry conditions? There was a satisfactory answer to that. They asked, we asked about the six capped areas on the Superfund site where they have a grassy cap over contaminated areas. The theory being, will prevent fluid from getting down through it, which will help to prevent contaminating and leachate from leaving at the bottom. Have you seen changes? Meaning, we were wondering about kind of the concentration and rate of contaminants migrating out of the bottom of those capped areas. We were seeing not significant changes, concentrations generally are declining. The caps are mostly containing the problem, but they aren't a solution to the problem. So that may be a germ of a question or a bit of input for us. If they're a containment but not a solution, is there something we want to sort of try to push into this process related to that? Clarification about the meets and bounds of the property, which was explained. Review the major concepts of the remediation process. So went over the work plan that Altima has submitted. So here's another thing, they keep alluding to this pilot study, which we've had describe to us to some extent, that they're piloting, pushing some materials down into the ground that would help to biodegrade the contaminants more rapidly, so pushing some friendly bacteria down in there. So we may have.
And potentially food for bacteria that might be naturally occurring.
Right, right. So food to encourage the activity of these bacterias, so for a natural breakdown process. So we may have a question related to that. We all like to have this cleaned up as fast as possible. What are the limiting factors? One limitation is not being sure which method will be fastest. Continued pump and treat, injection of these materials, what's going to be the fastest? So that might be another question. They've been pumping and treating water there since the mid-'90s. And I have heard from a hydrologist who's in a position to have some knowledge about this, that pumping and treating, just literally sucking the groundwater out, treating it and then moving it down to MSD, is over time, the science and the technology around it, they're recognizing it's not the most effective thing to do. You know, they're, we're sort of evolving in our understanding. So that might be another source of questions for us, really asking them, what's your appraisal of pump and treat? We've been doing it for 20 years.
It clogs up, I think.
It clogs up. You know, so if it's outmoded technology now, maybe we're in a position to ask people to really take a look at this. I mean, they're doing a site way. It might be an opportunity to, if they're looking at a refresh of technology, maybe we could encourage that. How do you identify the pilot test locations?
Identify what?
Huh?
Identify.
The locations where they're testing this injection of food and bacteria for the other friendly bacteria is a good answer to that. I mean, you know, they've got scientists on the job, they've made, probably made pretty good decisions about that kind of stuff. We asked about the air stripping, is that continuing? And that's another thing, maybe we can ask them about.
That's pump and treat. Pump and treat is air stripping.
It is air stripping, right? It's the same thing. That is the treatment, right?
That's what they're doing now, yeah. I think we could actually be kept up to date on what's happening with that vegetable water business.
The veggie oil.
That's the bacteria.
I know. We asked them about the rates of which gallons that are being pumped. They explained that. Oh, there are operational problems with the pump and treat. Due to biological activity, the water can be slimy. We asked about how does the remedial investigation support the delisting proposal? And so that gets, that's a question that I think it would be good for us to try to move in to this process. And somebody already phrased it better or already pretty well earlier. How does the evidence support the delisting? The community wants to express, if we do want to express a sense that of uncertainty around that, I'm sorry, for more evidence around that. But specifically, how does the RI support it? Although, see, they developed their own technical memorandum for the delisting, so maybe the RI doesn't have.
Yeah, I'm addressing it, doesn't it?
It doesn't. So that's the wrong question, really. The answer is the EPA is not supposed to support it. We have a technical memorandum to support it.
But we also have the same deadline at the end of this month for any comments we want to make on that technical memorandum.
Great.
The EPA said, I talked to an act of media and they said they would accept our comments or requests on that as well by the end of this month. So we have, we can talk about the draft RI or that.
So we can talk about them fluidly and then we will just put two separate memorandums towards that?
Potentially, yes. I mean, I think we can just send them a document that has, you know, section A, draft RI, section B, yeah, delisting.
It's all going to the EPA.
It's all going to the same people.
So no taboo subjects?
I wouldn't say that, but.
There was a suggestion from the last meeting that random sampling should be done. You know, this is the same thing, random sampling on this area that's being listed. What I have here is, there was a discussion about the utility slash validity of random sampling. That's what my notes say. And so, so I think it was Bill McCollum who said, well, there are, you know, peer reviewed parameters for random samples, right? So.
Yeah, and I support that.
And, yeah. Given what we know, is there a possibility that contaminants can migrate off-site within the foreseeable future?
Ooh, nice pantheon.
Is, well, what the minutes say is, there are no sources of new contamination. The plumes are slowly expanding, at least some of them are, but at some point it reaches steady state. Y'all remember this from last time? Sort of the idea that that movement of groundwater reaches some, and the movement of the plumes reaches some steady state. Our monitoring indicates they are probably in steady state, since due. However, we have extensive monitoring wells to guard against this migration occurring that are knowledge.
If I remember, wasn't the overall basis for the delisting was that there was, according to them, no industrial activity on those areas?
Right. There was no activity on those areas, no, nothing that they found. And when they went and walked it, they didn't see any evidence. It's my number of anything that would indicate there was potential contamination. But what we were told is that no testing has been done to test for contamination, because they did not think there was any reason to test, so they did not, in fact.
That seemed to be, they found a contention, one of the bigger ones last week, is that can we do just some testing just to make sure?
Yeah, that was something that I brought up and a couple other people have talked about that too, is potentially, if you, if you don't go look for it, you will never find it. Right? So if you're going to delist it off the Superfund site.
Prove it.
You know, instead of innocent until proven guilty, if it's a Superfund site, maybe it should be guilty until some evidence shows it's not. On the other hand, part of the argument is there, there's no evidence, there should be contamination out there, there's no evidence of use, there's no, and the interviews they did, they didn't find anybody saying there was dumping up there, they didn't see anything that indicated there would have been dumping up there. And that the site was originally listed based simply on the property boundaries. And so the reason it originally was included is because it simply was within the same property boundaries and it had nothing to do with actual contamination. So that's the other side of that.
Right, so part of the argument is that this is kind of fixing an error, in a sense.
Well, I remember Warren saying, well, how many tests do you want? It sounded like he was okay, but, so why don't we decide how many tests you want?
Yeah, I think it would be good for the community to ask for some reasonable random sampling protocol on the theory that this site has such a long history, groundwater contamination is really, really serious, and we would like a precautionary approach, but we're reasonable too, although precautionary approach often is reasonable, and kind of gives some suggestion. I mean, we've got bona fide, you know, scientists here who can help us say, here's what a good random sampling protocol might look like. And it also gives the PRPs an opportunity to kind of respond to us in good faith to a reasonable request. It becomes part of the story of this site. And we as a community are able to take another step forward, saying we had a good response here. So I think there's a case to be made for it, recognizing that there is this scientific, you know, this sort of technical argument that it would be a waste of valuable resources that we could be spending doing something else. But I think there's a case to be made for it.
Is that something that some of the scientists on the CAG could pull some calls together and come up with some references or, you know, come up with some little sampling plan based upon some stuff, you know, some references?
I would suggest, and this would be my suggestion, that we might want to, this is just me personally speaking, that we might want to come up with a request along the lines of, we as a community request this, done, you know, via random sampling and references that support, you know, the idea of random sampling as a scientific technique. And say, you know, we'd like to work with Altima to develop a plan for how that might be carried out. We'd like to see X number of these sites done, but we would like to work with the, with the company that has already been hired to do this, to figure out the feasibility of, you know, some sites that would satisfy both us and would be reasonably accomplished by the company that's been contracted to do so. Instead of saying like, we want these sites in these places, because I think that would be really hard to do without input from Altima. And I also think it would be a good fake gesture from our part to say, we're coming at this in a very reasonable way, we want to work with you, we don't want to decree, but we do think that there should be some sort of testing done, let's work together to figure out how we make that happen. That would be my suggestion in terms of approach, personally.
Well, we'll have to agree to then say, if it all comes up black, then we're going to have to say, okay. We're not going to have to come back and say, oh, now we should sample 50 more places. We thought of a reason to know about this.
Yeah, and that was pointed out to us one of the first times, you know, if you're going to go random, like how much is going to be enough and are we going to accept what comes back? It's really important, you know?
What is reasonable?
Right, and that's, that's a really important question and we want, I personally think we want to be reasonable, we don't want, you know, if we come off as very unreasonable, it will be easy to say, they're being crazy, let's just dismiss it. Whereas we come off with saying, you know, like, we want 10 to 20 or 20 to 30 or whatever number it is, and it seems like a reasonable number, that it will be harder for. and it seems like a reasonable number, that it will be harder for them to just carte blanche say, forget it, you guys are just being totally, you know, annoying or bullheaded about this.
And that's why it's so difficult, all it is with some, to understand exactly what this rub is. What do y'all do? Why aren't you up there with Tate McQueen and the folks up at the Supreme Court? Because that's what they had to go through. This is apples and oranges. This is different. Right?
This is different, and I would humbly suggest that I would like to try the path of cooperation before we try the path of litigation.
Right.
You know, we might be able to get a lot more done if we do something that is reasonable to both sides. But certainly it needs to be reasonable to both sides. You know, we need to, you know, if we think we really need this, we need to ask for it. But ask for it in a way that can potentially be a win-win for everybody. And I think the EPA made a good point last time. John talked about how ideally, we want the site to be delisted. Like, ideally, we want there to be no more contaminants and to be able to not have to have it listed as a superfund site. That's what everybody would want, it to be cleaned up and delisted. We just don't want it delisted before it should be delisted.
One thing I won't forget is John Born saying, and it's kind of like a site conversation you heard is, he says, well, there had, there was reports of at least one missile making it over the ridge.
Birdville or something.
Yeah, so, you know, if that happens.
About a shot.
So, I mean, it's funny-ish, but, you know. What made it over the ridge, you know, how many made it? Almost over.
Yeah, and this, this is weird. I understand and have respect for yourself. It's funny it's not, because the folks in this valley had to evacuate it. Because it wasn't, it went over the ridge, it went off the track.
And nobody knew?
And nobody knew where.
That was fine when they were doing the busy stuff.
How? Because it involved my family, we had to go down to their elementary school and stay so it would be safe. So this is something that this community, some would remember. And with this, that, we're cooperative, keep them on their toes. But that, we don't want all of Ukraine, that's not, that's not it.
Oh, sure we do.
Please don't read Putin. But do, because there are folks in the community who could relate to what I just said. Because of their forefathers, oh, Gosh, Jane, I remember that. I remember that. And, but have, again, no clue, and that's why I want to work with him to get the word out to what's happening. I appreciate all of this. I guess, cooperatively, guardedly. How does this tie in with the work of the Warren Brooks College students with the overview?
Well, they, they have, they have that presentation about what's up there. And what the, the explosives, what was in those rockets, of course, was ammonium perchlorate, which is pretty well gone. They didn't have, they, what contamination is chlorinated solvents. And that's what's in the groundwater. And I think if you're gonna talk about sampling, you need to decide if you want groundwater sampling, which is a lot harder to get than soil sampling. And, you know, what would satisfy you, so that's. But I doubt if the rockets would have made much groundwater issues. I mean, there might be a little bit of explosives up there, but those things are not, they don't want to great. It's the chlorinated solvents that are probably groundwater. And that, that would be, should be perchlorazamine up there.
It would be, in a missile, it wouldn't be enough body. I wouldn't think that it'd make it all the way down into the groundwater, well, I don't know.
I don't think you're that big.
Yeah, but, you know, where the groundwater contamination is, my understanding is where they dug pits and just started dumping.
Oh, they just dug it up in, yeah.
Which, you know, I think they could, that, they could probably reasonably, you know, determine if that was done enough, the slopes without, you know, sampling. There's physical evidence of that, but. I, that makes me think like, just some soil sampling.
No, get samples, but don't shake the ground, please.
But don't what?
Don't shake the ground, please.
Jared, do you have a comment?
Yeah, the question on the, I asked it myself, about the trees and having DNA done on them. You know, on the big boundary as well as whatever, to find out if there's any, I mean, a way of sampling.
Okay.
You know?
I don't think we're doing DNA sampling, but, so what would you be looking for for contaminants?
Well, I don't know, I'm not a scientist. But there's one thing about it, on environmental issues, you'll find, just like on the Inca property out there, there's deed restrictions, that you can't grow trees. Well, there's a reason why you can't grow trees, you know? So I'm just saying, it's, it's a way of finding out if there's something else that we might not be aware of.
Okay. Vicki, do you know for the particular chemicals that we're talking about, would there be uptake into the fluorid in the area?
Well, the issue would be with, with the trees would be metals.
Right, how many metals usually is what?
Yeah, and now they did find those around CTS. That some, well, they were going metal plate in there, helping acids and stuff. And of course, there are also metal issues up here, but that's right around the acid pits where they dumped all this stuff. But, I mean, I think on this boundary area, I just can't imagine, because metals don't move that far.
Metals don't migrate very well.
No, no, they still can be sawed pretty well, but metals are not hard to test for. I mean, you could grind up, you know, a tree and grind up, run through the AA, that's easy. And, you know, if you want to do that, you could see, but I, I, I mean, you might get a little bit, you know, if you get some of the crud from the explosives, some of those primers are.
It sounds a little like, like more remote.
It seems kind of remote that you get much metal, but they don't move very far. There are some up there, around the acid pits.
Around the acid pits, but that's in the superfund.
That's in this, that's in this.
And that is not in the area that they are proposing delisting. They are not proposing taking the acid pits out of the superfund site. Other thoughts or questions around that issue or, yeah?
Not about the delisting, but about the, this is a hard one, because there's standards. The state level of contaminants that they're doing, that they're measuring at the property boundaries, whatever wells they have over there. Is all our research done on up to what level of X chemical can you have? But is there, do they look at when there's X level of X chemical and Y level of Y chemical? Do they interact? Can that be addressed at all? And this RI, I mean, it seems like that's something that's not done normally. And maybe we should potentially, we're gonna change that, that's a concern that I'm surprised has never been dealt with. If you have 20 chemicals and all of them are below safety standards, what happens when they're all combined to the same location?
That, I think, is a really good question and a good issue, but I think it's probably outside of the purview of, I mean, I, I believe, from what I'm talking to Deener, Representative Beth, and to John, that they can only go by what is legislated and mandated. So they cannot enforce it. My understanding is, they cannot enforce it further than that safe limit that's been designated by either the state, Deener, or the federal government.
But it's a comment that could be put in at least in the record.
We could potentially make a comment on it, yeah.
Yeah, it might be good to have a question about that in the record, expressing our recognition that there may be chemical or other kind of synergistic interactions. And, and asking them, do they have knowledge of this? You know, have they thought about it? I mean, it could be at least informative. And kind of signaling to the technical experts at Altamont elsewhere that we were thinking about it, we'd like you to think about it. And it's, it makes sense.
Literature's somewhere, I'm not, but I think, if I remember, most of the wells, you just have one thing.
Yeah, they were.
One particular, they can't, they can't share something. They didn't have a whole lot of.
In terms of what they were looking for.
Right.
Yeah, it was all, yeah.
But about the acid pits, there were, I mean.
Oh, the acid pits, for us.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I would like to note at this time that they have offered to bring somebody in to talk specifically about the risk assessment that was done. And they have offered for that to be in the May meeting. So John has offered that. I was planning on talking to the board about, if we want that, I was fairly certain we do. So judging by the nodding heads, I feel comfortable replying and saying, yes, please come in May. And we'd like to hear from the person who did that. Because Stu was not the person who did that assessment, and so was not able to answer fully all of those questions, but did offer to bring in an expert to talk to us about how, how do you assess that? You know, how do you say, this is a risk to wildlife, this is the risk to humans, the risk to whatever?
There's a lot in the RI.
There's lots.
The RI has a lot, that's a big section of it.
Yeah, it is a big section. It's kind of, it's fairly difficult.
It's deep, yeah.
It's fairly kind of. So it'd be nice to have someone kind of give us a guide and tour.
Yeah.
You know, to answer our questions, there is a lot.
I think one thing, one kind of specific question that gets to a lot of the risk assessment is, Stu said that the anticipated reuse is industrial and that that reuse has a hazard acceptance level, whatever it is, it's, you know, it's a quantifiable level. And I think it'd be good to ask them, you know, why are the other, why industrial? Is, have things possibly changed since that was determined, it was probably determined decades ago that industrial would be the reuse, but is that really the reuse right now?
Are you talking about the technical memorandum about the delisting?
No.
No.
Oh, you're talking about for the, oh, for the RI, okay. I'm just trying to figure out where, just what we're talking about. Okay, so the RI, you're talking about the industrial, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what are the other safety levels that are associated with other risks or?
Like, if they did want to reuse it for residential, how would that change the?
How far away is this industrial goal from residential or whatever other?
Well, they, they got listed, they were considered residential.
Yeah, they did, it's written right out.
But they, they considered some industrial, but they also considered, like even trespassers or hunters or whatever. They have all other levels, but nothing.
The one thing that I think seems fairly viable would be, especially if they took out that upper part and it's surrounded by national forests and, you know, public land, I could see that potentially being used for some sort of recreation at some point.
They have that in there.
Yeah, and then with that, you know, that's the separated part, but with the RI portion, you know, it's gonna be right next to people recreating potentially. Is it gonna be safe enough for that? Or is the industrial, they got that, so.
Okay. They did say that their potential use for the delisted area was for timber. So it would still, as far as we know, stay in private land and wouldn't be something that is really opened up to hiding.
Yes, but I, I think it's still worth asking the question, you know. I'm not, I'm talking about the superfund site, you know, the, the back bar that they're not looking for. That's just, how far is it, how realistic is industrial? And how far away is the hazard acceptance level for industrial from, you know, other, other potential uses?
Okay.
I don't know, if anybody can answer this, Ma. I hear what you're saying, that upper part. Is anyone still affected as much as the Davises or the Kersmers, who live right there at Blue Creek?
Could you, what do you mean by affected as much?
Their property is right there.
Okay.
Do we have any other, I know that one time we had Laura or whatever, they had property that was buddy right up against or with this property. Anybody else affected with property that they owned that's within the bounds of what we're talking about?
You mean, butts up against?
Yeah.
Well, there's other property on this.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely other property. Yeah, and they did do testing of people's wells around the site and did not find any contamination in offsite wells that were residential wells.
1500 feet, right, was the standard?
I believe you have to, I have to go back to my. So they did test people's wells when they were looking back at it? Other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
This draft RI has been out for over a year, and EPA was supposed to review it and ask questions.
Okay.
Have we gotten anything what EPA's comments are on?
We've asked them, we haven't, and I have not gotten them.
So they weren't getting glacial pace, are they?
Yeah, we've asked them for them, including, including comments on the risk assessment, because those are the clump that have been the slowest in terms of turning around. I think both from EPA, I think Altamont's been pretty timely. So we have asked for those. And John, I believe in person indicated a willingness, you know, I don't think he said no.
They haven't come up with it yet, been over a year.
Well, I don't know when we asked for them the first time.
The RI was, uh, middle?
Yeah, I think they're, I mean, Altamont has received comments.
But we haven't, I haven't seen.
But we haven't gotten copies.
Oh, well, I think we should get copies of what, what?
Yeah, so somebody should remind John. I can do that. Because we, we asked for them and we said we would put them up on the website and nodded his head, so. He didn't express anything.
I would, I would check with Bill first and make sure that, since Bill wasn't able to be here today, because he's out of town, and he's the official liaison, why don't we check with him first just to make sure that he didn't get them? Yeah.
The question on the pump and treat, I think Altamont person last time indicated that, my question about the drought and how that affected it at that time, or possibility of affecting it? The question would have been, you know, he said, it depends on MSD and how much we can release at a certain time? Well, the thought come to me, if you can't release at certain times, then what are you doing or can you do? Because they didn't say anything about loading it on a truck, you know, like they do at landfill, and pump it in, take it to, with a truck and pump it. So to me, it's a concern, if you can't get it to MSD through the natural pipeline that they're pumping and treating, then if it's just sitting there, more likely you've got contaminants doing whatever more. You know, you're not getting rid of it in a timely manner, according to what was said at the last meeting.
This is like a more informational question. What are you doing with it when MSD can't accept it?
Or is that more of a general, what's, what, can you tell us more about the pump and treat that's going on?
Yeah.
Maybe we can make it more general.
I have to go. I'm sorry. Can you pick up to two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm paraphrasing that, but what happened, what's done with the water when it can't be released, MSD? What's done with the water when it can't be released? Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Do we want to go back over the, the report saying that they wanted to delist? Did talk about increased runoff rates, plant uses or?
Okay.
How we talked about that one.
So. So runoff from, from activities after delisting, basically?
Yeah. Even, even timber management, you know, really can potentially increase runoff.
Yep.
And I think that it would be, I think it's very reasonable for us to do twice that any land use that happens up there has a note, man, please, of soil water runoff. That's very, it's very well within range to do it more.
Okay, and so, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but the one thing we might want to think about is, I believe there's a ridge going through the site, and some of that delisted portion would potentially go this way. The runoff would go that way, and so that might not be going in circles. Yeah, but then, from what I remember, and I would have to look back at Stu's presentation, what I remember of his presentation, the way it works in this site is actually the groundwater being the way you would sort of expect from the property. But we should, we should look back on that.
In terms of, if the ground is higher, water will go from top to bottom, not from sides of the second.
It, it all drains.
It, it all drinks this here, every bit of this. It all comes down Beet Tree Creek.
Okay. It could go towards Beet Tree Creek, but since things aren't in Beet Tree Creek. Right, we're talking about the groundwater flow increasing to a tributary that would then go this way. Because my understanding, and I am not a hydrologist, I'm a biologist, right? So it could go directly this way and then go through versus going through the site over here.
Yeah, but I, there's a concern about, you know, if they can really do enough sampling to prove that that area contaminated. I, I think, I think the, I think it's reasonable and probably cautious thing to do is just blanket request that there's no increase in runoff from all the delisted areas. Stu didn't talk about a lot of the area that one could de-list, if not all. They did put groundwater wells all over up there so they don't know exactly what is going on.
Right, they didn't do sampling up there. So we, yes, that might be one thing just to make our comment that we request that whatever's done with that delisted site does not increase runoff.
Really, the point too is one of the corners toward the south, I mean, some of this country noticeably very close to the battery going in the direction of water flow. And then you added runoff to us, you know, the concern and, well, this is, this.
Could we broaden that and say that we hope that any logging that's done be done by really responsible forestry practices, part which is not increasing runoff and erosion. But it's important that, that you get a, a really responsible forester. And maybe asked to be included in the decision of what forestry companies they hire.
I think the forestry part, it keeps coming up. I remember in the morning that it wasn't something that they were definitely getting moved forward on. It was just an idea that got thrown out as a possibility.
Both that.
But, right, yeah, but the notion of whatever they do do, controlling for, you know, the forestry management and erosion control or stormwater runoff, the points that are surrounding this whole idea of forestry, whatever else might be there. Because, I mean, they could say forestry, but really, I mean, if it gets de-listed, there's, none of us are gonna be able to stop them from going in the house there or from whatever. Yeah, exactly.
No, no, no.
There isn't de- restrictions.
Those are the de- restrictions.
Yeah, there are, but, I mean, well, maybe not build a house, but I think John mentioned that there's light industrial or something like that he said was within the potential and that can really.
How far is this discovered? Is this going to bring in a watershed?
Yeah.
Then how are we gonna get in with ash now and who's taking out the water?
And who's taking, I'm sorry, I can't hear your entire question, what was that?
Yeah, how are we gonna get into the water as far as the watershed is concerned? If it, the legislature sees that, but as far as the other entity that may be, be in charge of the watershed.
I don't think this is actual watershed drainage.
Yeah, it, it borders it, but it's at the ridge line, so.
At the ridge line?
Yeah, so everything on this property goes away from the watershed, but it does border, but it's kind of, depends on where.
So it would not be an issue?
Well, it doesn't drink towards our water source.
I think we could ask to be included in the negotiations with any log, any foresteries that they, that they, if they're, you know, if they can, ask to be, just, we could respectfully ask to be included in the negotiations.
So let's, let's just say we want to be included in the negotiations about future use if it does become de-listed. Because it may not be forestry and so let's just broaden that a little bit. Is that okay with everybody? So included in discussion for free, future use?
If we request it now.
The property I mentioned earlier about the ponds that's on the private property and they talked about they examined wells 1500 feet, I believe, from the property line. Well, these ponds are out in the open. He never, he said, he said they couldn't investigate those ponds and they hadn't asked the parties that owns it, the industrial, if they could actually look at them. So I think that would be a serious question because how do we know where that water's coming from in those ponds? It might not just be surface water. So I think it's a reasonable question to ask because it's right at the entrance of that place.
I, I can ask that, I am almost positive that they will say that is outside of the bounds of the draft RI and.
Just like you said on the other question, if you don't put it out there, you might not know what the answer might be.
That it would be out of bounds, I mean, they went out and tested people's water wells off site.
Yeah.
Do you, do you know what they do in the ponds specifically? I was thinking like, obviously fish there or whatever.
I have no idea and he didn't need it because he didn't have any questions or answers to my questions. So it never had been investigated according to what I'm hearing.
My guess is old gravel pits, old gravel pits all along here.
It's a controlled water.
Yeah, no, I think it's where they dug gravel a while ago and it's just a hole there.
It's filled with gravel over there.
Yeah, well, what was they doing with a lot of the old gravel pits, we threw garbage down, so at least they didn't do that there.
Any other questions or comments?
Am I understanding correctly that the areas that are proposing to be declassified on the site, the very areas that have not ever been tested?
Correct, there has not been testing done on those areas.
And, and who is pushing to have it declassified and, and to what, to what end?
The owners of the site would like it to be declassified.
So that?
They have asked for it to be declassified and to, the only end that we have been told is it possibly would be used for timber production.
So then it's very important that it be tested so that we know it's not contaminated.
Right, that, that's the argument behind doing some, some proactive testing. Instead of saying, we trust that it's not tested because there doesn't seem to be any reason to test it, is saying, we have tested it in some reasonable sampling fashion and determined that it is in fact actually not.
That would be the number one question to propose, to ask them and to propose.
That seems to be one of the, one of the higher up questions, yes. I agree, I agree with your, I agree that it's a high priority. We need to collectively agree that it's a high priority, but it seems to be coming up again and again. So yes, I think that's probably an accurate assessment.
I think they made it clear that if something did come up while they were doing anything to that property, that it could be shut down and looked at and investigated, you know, put back in, even, even a park.
If there was some contamination that was found, it would be pulled back under Superfund. Superfund can, even if it's de-listed, could say, yeah, we de-listed it tomorrow, but today we've decided it's contaminated and it's back. So that is a potential. The issue still being if you don't test for it, we'll never know that it's contaminated. Other comments?
This is another issue that was sort of touched upon earlier. They said it was outside of the scope of PRPs and the EPA and the general scope of the RI. A lot of people talked about local health and that it seems to have integrated for some living in the area. And trying to find out like whether or not evidence to support is, you know, has the site potentially affected local health in the area? Whether it's something we want to look into or ask the EPA to at least make a note of or just forget about in general. I think I'm the only person who's brought it up. I know Grant Millen brought it up once a long time ago, it hasn't been brought up since then. But again, just the concerns over like the local health of the citizens and whether or not the Superfund site has possibly any effects past health in the area.
Personally, I think that would be something that we might want to investigate and look into, but wouldn't necessarily be something that we could do in a draft, in comments on the draft RI. Do you disagree with that?
Well, it seems like something we could ask this person who's gonna come in May.
Yeah, we could talk about in terms of the risk assessment.
The risk assessment, I think that person would be able to answer questions about local health. I'm sure that they'd think about that in the risk assessment.
I would expect they'll probably tell us that nothing has ever left the site, so. Yeah, well, that's the thing is like, nothing recently documented has ever left the site. But I also brought up the idea of, if they could potentially reverse forecast what happened in the site 40 years ago. I mean, they have so much data now, they have so much, so many models on water flow and if the site is really that predictable, that the water always drains from one direction to the other, we have so much data from the national weather, there was, you know, sort of reverse forecasts, what plumes may have been up before.
Well, there were health issues with the guys who worked on the BZ, but they're all dead. I mean, now there's the great stories back in the eighties with those old BZ guys, you remember that, don't you? Yeah, Charles Zerber uncovered the whole thing back in about 84, I think. But.
These were site workers?
Yeah, guys who worked on the site. But I would, but there was no, by whenever they were doing it, there was no EPA, there was no, there was, uh.
There was also a question that I asked about putting a floor in the plumes where they got the covers over them and fixing it because it has dirt floor in there. To, to me, I don't know, he said it's a possibility that you could do that. And that might stop some of the moving of the water. Of course, you treat to, more of it too probably. If it ain't seeping in the ground, you could treat more.
He did, I remember he showed a diagram showing like it was capped, so water isn't pushing it from the bottom. He showed, I mean, I thought it was pretty clear that groundwater is still, you know, moving through this way. There was nothing, no barriers to walk.
And there also was question about potentially putting drills in instead of puncturing the cap because that was discussed, we don't want to puncture the cap and potentially introduce more water flow that would spread the contamination. But I do remember Stu mentioning that it might be possible, especially with drilling technologies that we have now, to, you know, go in sideways or diagonally to pull out from those acid pits and potentially treat at the source at those acid pits rather than treating groundwater that's, well, that has been deteriorated and flowing through. So that might be a question or a request that we can make is to examine more thoroughly and report back on the possibility of treating more directly at the acid pit. So that might be something we could request more information about or request more study done or request them to do it.
I think the biggest thing is we need, I'd like more of an update on what's happened with the, that bio remediation stuff.
Okay.
I mean, that's what they're hoping for, I think.
Is to treat at the acid pits?
Well, I think they, they're hoping they'll treat everything with that, theoretically, in my work.
Right, yeah, in theory, that.
Yeah, my work. The acid stuff, I think, the metals won't go too far no matter what.
Who's left in Altamont?
What do you mean?
Well, you mentioned Altamont, are they the ones that we started off with, the Cheney and his crew?
They are not the site owners, they are a company that was hired to do the scientific work on the site. They are not, they do not own the site.
And manages remediation, right? In terms of the actual work being done?
To a certain extent, I don't know if the person.
Well, I think it's interesting, you gotta, you gotta work within the parameters of Altamont because they can request things to be done or propose something, but, but that's all they can do because they're being contracted, right?
Yes, they, yeah, they are hired by the PRPs.
So we're gonna have to go to EPA and the responsible parties to get them to do whatever because Altamont can't just up and do it.
Right, no, I mean, we can't, it is not our place to ask Altamont to do things and it is not Altamont's place to do things upon our request. However, the EPA can direct the things that need to be done and that the PRPs would pay for that via Altamont. It's my understanding and interpretation.
What about questions on legal? Are there anything on legal questions? Because that's pretty, you know, when the attorney came and we talked about boundaries and talked about the legal, was there any questions, I'm just bringing it up, are there any legal things that, in our concerns, that might be something to?
Well, I mean, EPA is still looking at, last time I talked to them, the last time they were here, they said they were still, their legal people are still looking for precedent and how this actually happens legally and those kinds of questions. They still don't know legally how, how they would handle it.
Yeah.
It's happened once before?
They think, we're not sure it's the situation, I mean, John, that's not John's area, so I don't think John.
No, but it don't keep us from asking the question because it could do, it, it could be affecting the property owners in, in a different way.
Okay, but what do you mean, what question, what is your question? I guess I don't know what questions right now.
Well, declassifying the property, how could that affect the homeowners in the community and their property values and whatever, because it could destroy a lot of folks.
We have asked about property values and we were basic, I, we were basically told that that's not what the EPA does. They don't evaluate property values and they don't make any, their charge legislatively is not to protect property values, it's to protect human health. So they won't invest, they won't be investigating property values because that's not within their charge.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, one question did come out of it and that was, that was deed restriction on the property that they do declassify, about what kind of restrictions, that was a question, what kind of restrictions would be on that property on the deed? Because it would be deeded off.
We do have that information in the technical report. They, they stated what deed restrictions they would put on. So we could ask for more stringent deed restrictions potentially, but they have, we have that information, what they said were the deed restrictions, I don't know if you, are you, can you connect to the internet here?
Can't, there's so many.
Okay, I would have to look at it to be, to give you the very specific deed restrictions, but it was things about water use and things like that, that they weren't allowed to pull any, no drinking water was gonna ever be used for the site and it wasn't gonna be used for residential or schools, things like that.
Are you guys talking about the Superfund site or the?
Talking about the delisting.
The delisted area.
Yeah, and there were deed restrictions that they proposed that they would put on as part of that proposal to de-list. They had listed deed restrictions.
Well, we had a concern as well because like he said about the light industrial, we had concerns here about, well, there's a potential it could be more than just forestry, but it was still not cleared up that that's all it would be. The lawyer was very hesitant not to say, yes, this is absolute it.
So is your question just, can you be more clear and more specific about what the use actually would be? Is that your question?
Well, certainly, because if it's something else, then the deed restriction might change.
Well, my understanding is the deed restriction would be permanent.
Well, it's always permanent.
So it wouldn't change?
No, what I'm talking about, it might change differently if it was something else being used on that property other than just doing the timber.
So are we under assumption that, that the PRPs will directly use that delisted property immediately after it's de-listed? Because my assumption is, may just be my personal one, was that the easiest thing would be to sell it or you could use it for something instead of paying for something else. I don't know how much it would sell, what value it would be. But I feel like it seems pretty open ended and that's, I, I would hope that the deed would cover up, you know, whatever potential stuff would happen in the future. Even if, if the PRPs were gonna say, we expect to use it for this, well, it could change later on, like you said, that whatever use would be.
The deed restrictions would still be in place.
No matter whose hands it was in.
Right, that's the whole point.
Right.
But there is question about, you know, what they would, they certainly were not clear about what exactly they were committing to doing with it. So one aspect that we could do, and this would be a request, not a, you know, I'm not sure we could legally push any of this, but we could request that it be put into conservation easement. And there was somebody here who was interested in coming to the meeting specifically to talk about it being put into conservation. What?
That's John Ager, he knows all about that.
There was another person who was here, actually. There was a woman who was here who was talking to them about, and she spent some time talking to the lawyer about conservation easement, that's a potential. So there is a potential that we as the community could put forth our wishes. So there is a potential that we, as the community, could put forth our wishes and say, you know, we would like to be involved, right? We would like something that doesn't increase runoff and we suggest a conservation easement. Like, that is what, that is what the community would like for you to do with this site. That would potentially help with their taxes, things like that, but would still address some of the concerns. So that is, that is an option that we could put forward as just a position statement that the community's position is, we would like this to be what you do with it. Now, I mean, they can say like, that's great, we don't care, but.
I, I don't, I like taking that more proactive approach, like suggesting this is what we'd like.
Okay.
You can get it down, yeah, you can get it down, paper's good.
Right, right, as a formal comment, the community can ask for this and then whether or not they deny it.
I'm gonna tell you what I'm talking about, oh, yes, yes, you do.
So, just straw poll, because this can't be binding, we don't have enough people, but are people in favor of requesting it to be put in conservation easement?
Yes, sure, we would request.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Is anybody opposed that idea? I mean, you know, there's some people who might, you know.
They're pretty much meaning I could use the property for anything.
Yeah, as a recreation.
Yeah, so it could be used for some things, but not very, not very much.
The music. I tell you, the argument against it, it, there, there are people in the community who would make a strong argument against it. Not one of them. There's no tax revenue off of that property.
I understand that, but you're looking, you're looking at the devil. But is, is your position that you think or you're hoping that somewhere from heaven is gonna come a recreational area, I think, or park?
When I say recreation, I just mean like, like the national forests, you know, it's just woods, but you could hike there or there's a trail or something, or you can go on it or something. Not like a.
Not like a park.
Yeah, not like a park.
I mean, this property still would probably even be listed, be fenced in with it.
Yeah, I think it.
It is not currently fenced in.
It's not currently fenced in?
The property, as it stands right now, is not completely encased by a fence.
You wouldn't know the difference between, if you could walk from the national forest to the watershed, you wouldn't know the difference.
Yeah, so this property is not fully, the entrance is closed in, but they told stories when we went to go see the site about how every once in a while they have to let somebody out.
Yeah.
Did you just point to yourself?
I found my way out.
So, in theory, there are, there are ways to get in and out, it is not, I mean.
It's a big area.
It's a huge, it's a huge area, they have not fenced the entire area around it, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, right, it's not fenced, correct?
Well, it's working out.
So, they have fenced like the gate going in and things like that, you can't drive into it.
Good job.
I would, I, I'd really like the idea of saying, you know, the community would like a conservation easement. I, I would even take it a step further and say public access or transfer to the National Forest Service or the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission to make it a game land or something like that where it's, could be used by the community.
Okay, that might be something, we, uh, believe the person who's here is from Highlands, um, so we can talk to them if they want it. That's another thing that is a potential issue that sometimes they don't want responsibility for that particular area because there, there are sometimes responsibilities that go along with that.
Somebody else can call it, it doesn't matter, Highland, that Black Forest Conservancy, does it have to be the holder of the easement? Especially a situation like this, I mean, the federal government could, they could transfer, uh, transfer over to the federal government and become part of National Forest or something.
Right, and what I'm saying is, is that might not be something that they would want, but we should check into that before we necessarily, if, if Southern Highlands wants to do it, it would be great to be able to come forward with them and say, we would like you to put it into a conservation easement, they are standing, ready and waiting to do that, because that'd be more powerful, right?
We have time to do that by the end of this month. I think, so I think maybe the request is that we could, the community would like it to be public access conservation land. And you, some options may be to work with the Forest Service, just National Forest Service or State Forest Service or a local land conservancy. And just like you were sampling, you know, we don't need to give them the detail on exactly how many samples we want, they say this is kind of a process of, not a.
I think we might rethink, uh, the, the conservation is making it a solid statement that we want it. We better think about, we'd like to have a conversation about it to see if it's a possibility because, uh, you know, like the county government, when they, uh, the taxpayers start looking at this, it ain't gonna be this little group here with their heads spinning, it's gonna be a much bigger picture and it could be a big fallout. We need to think about the larger scope of this, what, what might come about because we're talking about a contaminated site, this property joined it and you never know what environmental group might come out really hard. And then it'd be an opportunity to say, we just wanted to talk about it. Then that'd give a chance rather than making a solid statement that we want it. You see, you see my point?
I don't think there's any risk of an environmental group opposing the conservation easement.
It might not be the environmental group, it might be the taxpayers of the local counties. You know, you never know what's gonna come out.
Well, I guess, Jerry, you've been experiencing this, haven't you? Not knowing what's gonna come out of it.
Oh, well, I can tell you, when you least expect it, it's gonna hit you.
I guess.
Well, that's certainly true of any statement that we might make as a CAG. And I think at, at a certain point, we have to make some sort of statement that might be, might be negative, might be positive from different perspectives, whether that just be we oppose the delisting or whether it be we want more information, you know, whatever. At some point, there will be, from any potential statement that we make, there might be, there might be fallout. So we need to consider that and I appreciate that, but that may be something that we need to consider as a risk and move forward anyway, or it may be something.
We haven't got all the information, just like she was talking about a while ago. We ain't got information from the government on their position. So here, we're taking a solid position on something, say in conservation, when we haven't got all the facts yet and all the questions from them answered.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I totally agree. From my impression, in the last meeting, John Vornell was saying, he sounded basically that delisting that area is, is simple and they would just do it. It sounded pretty easy to.
I'm not talking about the delisting, I'm talking about the use of it and what you might want to do with it.
Well, yeah, I, I know.
That's two different questions.
But I, I think that, I, I feel like, um, from John's comments that the EPA would probably be very easily let them put light industrial, timber harvest however they want and just go at it. But, so our comments are to kind of make that more conservative and, um, you know, keep that land in taxes more stable. And I don't see anything wrong with that at all.
Okay, so originally, nobody was opposed to conservation easement. Are people now thinking they might be opposed to it being in conservation easement? Us suggesting it being in conservation easement?
I think really all we can do is suggest, at this point, we're not the land owner.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make any legal decisions, but does anybody have a problem with potentially suggesting that we prefer it go into a conservation easement if it is in fact delisted?
I think the word prefer is a lot better than what you said a while ago, that you wanted it in. Preferring it gives a, you know, an opportunity to discuss it.
Okay, I think there's cinnamons, but if you'd like prefer better, we'll go with prefer. Okay?
Uh, my question is, if they do, if we do get it delisted, if that does happen, will they fence in the site?
I sincerely doubt it. If they haven't fenced it in, well, it's a superfund site.
Can we just ask a question?
Okay.
I don't like the idea that somebody can just walk into a place where there's hazardous chemicals.
Well, in theory, are you talking about, will they, will they fence in the remaining superfund site? Or will they fence in the part they just delisted?
No, after you've delisted, are they gonna fence in the remaining?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I thought you were saying, will they fence in what they just delisted? And I was like, I don't think so.
I don't care about that.
Okay.
But I do care about.
Okay, that makes, that makes more sense, sorry.
I think it's disturbing that you can come in the back way is what I heard.
I didn't realize that was the case.
I thought you found that.
Yeah, I didn't hear what I said.
Go right into the.
That blew me away.
There are a lot of fences out there that fence off the worst areas.
Yeah, the acid pits are fenced.
And those, you know, the spots with the soil caps and the dungling sites, those are all fenced, big fences. And like she said about people that have to let people out, it, they probably were really looking hard to get through the, around.
Oh, no, that's reasonable, I understand that.
Well, that, that's reasonable to say, though, as part of the delisting, will you?
Will you fence the remainder? That makes sense, I thought you were talking about the area of the delisting and I was like, I can't imagine they would fence that whole, yeah, but the smaller area, okay. I mean, we could ask, I don't know that they wouldn't, but we can ask.
I mean, you know, if you want it delisted, then what's left you need to protect.
Okay, especially if it was public access?
It'll be small, much smaller area.
It would be a much smaller area, so maybe more usable fencing.
Very big holographic warning signs too.
Warning sign.
Your head might grow twice.
Drink water.
Are you gonna make a list of these and send them out an e, an email to all of the, okay?
Well, I think what we should do at this point, if we're done with putting things up, we have twenty-five minutes until the, the end of the meeting, which is at eight-thirty technically. So, the thing we could do from here is, some of these may be more, you know, factual questions that we just ask that don't need to be a public comment, but just need to be like, hey, can you ask them this? Right? Um, so some of them, we may need to look into further before we can formulate anything on it. Some of them we're pretty solid on, so maybe we should go through and figure out which ones are which. Does that make sense? Okay, um, so.
Can we leave that up to the, uh, the board?
So, I mean.
I mean, those are all, those are our questions. And then, basically now it just needs consolidated or, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Are they all captured between you and?
Maybe, and I'll take a snapshot.
Oh, you're gonna go through?
Sure. And then. I, uh, I'm having some concerns about outreach of the website. Looking at the numbers, it's not a very amazing amount, they've got forty site delists, which is very small for what I'm.
Forty times?
Totals since January. Nah, since January, nah, or.
Since January two, and those are immediate.
Oh, yeah, those were. Well, they, they can tell it's the same person. So, I, I have a concern over out, reaching out to enough of the community. And so this Black Mountain News thing is gonna be, I think, pretty key. I'm gonna talk to fans a bit more. But I'm also looking for help to sort of canvas, uh, with papers or just reaching out to, maybe even door-to-door, I don't know. Getting some just public, but consolidating these, asking questions, really simple ones, and trying to get some feedback.
Okay, so what I will say to that, as the, as the chair, and I'm speaking, yeah, I'm speaking as the chair, we do not probably have time realistically speaking. Before the end of April, when we need to get these comments into the EPA. So I'm more, I am totally in support of us doing more public outreach, not through the web and doing other things to publicize things. I am a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent behind that. I don't think we have the time or manpower right now to go out and ask about these particular questions before they would need to be written up for the deadline of the end of the month of April. I do think we should ask and solicit comments from the other members who were not able to be here tonight because multiple people emailed and said they were out of town or, you know, had other commitments. So I'm certainly happy, and I think we should, ask for comments on this from other members of the CAG and ask for a vote of the CAG, but, um, I, realistically, we would have needed to start that earlier, I think, if we were gonna go door-to-door and ask and poll people about this.
Do you wanna maybe set a date on if anybody here comes up to any more questions or anything that we can submit them to you or whoever's coming to collect them? Do I set a date for that and, um?
Yeah, I'll try.
Now, I heard you say that you wanted the board to decide what questions.
Not decide, but I think those are all our questions, plus whatever, you know, is added. You said you've got to solicit the rest of the CAG who's not in attendance. I'm not saying like cut out some of the things, I'm just saying, we don't need to sit here tonight and write paragraphs and, you know, flesh out those things as a, as the group. I think that sounds like writing as a committee. It's just, somebody just needs to step up and, and write that out, send it out to everybody as a draft and say, hey, what do you think?
Okay, what I was asking for is if we wanted to go through these and decide which ones were official EPA comments and which ones were not official EPA comments. But we don't, we could do that as a board instead.
You, you, you might think it a different way, submit the questions as a tag. If, if the EPA says no to it, then, they say no to it, but at least we give their, our voice to it because we don't know, sometimes it might be a question legitimate and it might not. So, the ones we think it might not, might be a real legitimate question if they saw it.
Well, it's not just the EPA, it's the PRP, I mean.
Well, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there are different levels. We can, I can send all of these an email to John and just say, hey, which can you answer off the top of your head? And that's not a problem. But if we wanna make an official statement as a CAG about some issue, that is a different level than me asking John if he can answer the questions. It's just a different, it's a different level in the hierarchy of how serious it is.
All of this needs to go into an official thing, into official comment.
Okay.
And I think, I, I think, I for one trust the board to solidify that because that is gonna be several page, several pages worth of comments, several, several pages probably worth of comments to flesh those out and explain a little bit further. And that just sounds like some board can do.
You're saying, here's the question and here's why we're asking it?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, why, why, why are we concerned about this? For instance, the sampling thing, uh, you know, your, your, how judged by John's comments and his take on it? I got the impression that John pretty much is major decision maker on, 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 uh, what they're gonna do with the delisting and, you know, the, at least the requirements that are gonna be placed on it. He did not sound very convinced that you can do random sampling in a scientific manner. So you, you may have to go out, you know, cite a little literature saying, you know, here's.
Okay, here, here's my response to that, that's awesome. Who wants to take part to this?
I'll do the runoff thing.
Okay. Okay, so you're gonna do the runoff thing?
I'll just try to consolidate during all.
What?
I'll just try to consolidate during all the group then.
Okay.
Because they're really scattered between the board and my, maybe, so.
Okay.
Okay, some of these are updates or, or more, give, give us more detail about the pumpkin tree and about the vegetable oil business. So I think that is a, that's a general clump of stuff, that we want more information about what's going on right now in the treatment.
Okay.
So you're saying that would, that would not be part of the comments, it would be just a separate questioning? Or?
Well, I think it could be part of the comments.
Okay, and then just.
Okay, I, I'll consolidate those that are the requests for more information. And I can even send those to John in advance. And if we get information back before we do officially submit comments, then we can withdraw that request. So I can do that and try and have that sent out in the next couple of days to John as a, hey, by the way, can you give us this information? Or do we need to actually submit a formal request? You know, will you just give it to us when we just ask for it, or will you, do we need to go through this process? So, okay, I can do that part?
I can't read what's up there now. Why don't you summarize what's up there?
Okay, how good is the pumpkin tree, new, better technology slash veggie oil? So that's kind of a request for update. So, um, this is a big one about the support for this delisting, what kind of evidence is there? What kind of random sampling do we want? This one person could summarize this, but it probably needs to be a CAG and community decision about what we actually want here. I mean, I could write something up, but I want to know what the community wants from it, there are numerous.
I think you said it really well earlier in that, you know, just, it's not our place to say it needs to be twenty samples or a hundred samples or they need to be this deep or, you know, in these locations. I think, I think the way you put it earlier that. I think, I think the way you put it earlier that, you know, there is a scientific process we're intending and, and the community would feel much safer about this if, you know, if you follow a proven scientific process. And that's pretty much it.
I, I can almost guarantee you that the question will come back, because the question that has come back, the two times I've asked it is, well, how many do you want? Tell me, tell me a number of how many you want, and then we can start the process of negotiating. Just like if you said, you know, I want a house that's affordable.
I, I don't think, I don't, I, that's the plus John's given us, and I think.
That's also the response the lawyer gave me.
I don't think either one of them has a scientific background to, to evaluate any number you throw at them. Therefore, I think the process we need to take is, like I said, cite some sources or give an example of how, uh, you know, somebody who knows how many samples you need to take out there, um, how do we do it?
Maybe existence service that already knows that.
Well, when they, when they did it on the site itself, didn't they lay it out in the grid? And take samples in the grid?
But they based it on what, what they knew was where.
But they based it on, they only did that around a certain area, you know, they did things around the acid pit or they did something around there, so.
Those create existing evidence.
Right.
And just as a, as a biol, you know, field biologist, I am not, but isn't there, say you could take a large chunk of landscape and say you're wanting to determine how many, I don't know, horses are on this ten thousand acres. Um, short of going out counting every single one, can't you just go out and pick, you know, random blocks of areas and count them and do some fancy statistics that gives you a, a, you know, estimate of? I don't think you could do the same thing with soil.
Sure, and there, there are ways to think about that. The issue at hand, though, is there's still, the more, the more samples you do, right, the more accurate your count will be if you're talking about counting something that's there, you know, right? The more samples you take, the more accurate you will be. I think we need to propose, and this is what I'm hearing from them, not from me, but I think what they want to know is what is the threshold at which you will be satisfied? Is it fifty samples done in a random sampling manner, which could be discussed in the future? And I, what I was saying when I said, you know, we don't wanna say based on a grid every twenty-five feet or whatever, you know, is that we should talk with Altamont, the scientists out there, we should talk with John about where it makes sense to do that and where it might not make sense to do that. But I think we need to come up with some threshold that we will accept as if you do this, then we, the community, will accept that you have made a good faith effort to do that testing. And maybe we need more research on that, right? That's, that's an issue, but we are on a timeline where we need to.
Do you think we'll, we would get any positive feedback if, if our request wasn't so specific, but our request was, we request to work with Altamont and, you know, whatever resources you can provide us to develop a sampling protocol that we'll be happy with. But as of right now, we don't know what that is, but we are asking to work with your professionals to come up with that.
They've been very hesitant to commit to anything without a number. Is my, my read on the situation, right, is that I've been asked repeatedly, well, what would satisfy you? Give me a number. Tell me how many you would want. This sounds very open-ended, that you just want us to go out and do sampling. Tell, tell me what that number would be. And so I, I'm not.
I think Altamont, maybe, or somebody like that could give some benefit of the doubt.
There are whole books in the library on environmental sampling. I mean, it is a big. And from my experience in analytical chemistry, I mean, even to sample railroad car stuff, it's tough to get a really good, I mean, to get something can be really sheer off, and particularly something like this. And that's really tough.
Yep.
Yeah, and it would seem it would depend upon what the intended use was for the land that you're testing. I mean.
That's a good point.
If you're planning to do a playground, then you'd probably do a ton of sampling. But if you're planning to just look at, you know, like your house or maybe trek on it from day to day, it probably could be considered a little less.
In, in a more practical, you know, playground, but if you're planning on bulldozing logging roads, disturbing soil versus not disturbing soil, I mean, that.
Is it, if there's maybe a way to link it to the deed restrictions? If you intend to go to this level of use, it would be X minus sampling and, or there, again, there would be a lot of research.
Why don't you have to, he knows, he probably knows more, although I don't know how much, but, right, he'd be the one to ask. But there, I know there's books in the library on how to.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's heavy duty.
Yeah.
Are we taking, talking about five hundred and sixty acres or something like that?
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's three thirds of the, of the whole site, isn't it?
I mean, if you, if you look at one acre and do a sample, that's five hundred and sixty, whatever it is, you know, the, that's a lot of sampling. Just an acre land, that's, but, but going in there and sampling where they might think is not always appropriate either.
Right, and that's, that is the argument from my field where if you say, this is a habitat map, this is a potential habitat map where we think this species should occur based on all the knowledge we have of that species, but we're only gonna sample within that area that we've decided we think it should occur in, then you will never have additional data that says it's actually a crazy story. It can actually survive in this area we never even thought it could survive in. So that, you know, and there are examples of things popping up in weird places for species, so.
I think the intended use, like you said, in the deed restriction is a very core piece to identify for with lots of sample, how many.
I, I think that's a legitimate point to make to John. Say, hey, if you want, and if you want an exact number, then you have to tell us exactly what the land can be used for, because that will affect the number that we request.
Right.
And the, and, you know, better yet, is let's all work together to figure, figure this out, sort of come up with.
Okay, so it's sounding like people aren't comfortable with suggesting a number, but want to suggest, basically, we would like to know what the land use is, and then we would come up with a number based on that land use in communication with blah, 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 in collaboration, et cetera, et cetera? That was very paraphrased. You can put in blah, blah, blah.
And we should put that on there.
Yeah, I don't think you should put it, because it'll come with this blah, blah, blah. Okay?
Hopefully there's a pre-existing models.
Well, there are models about environmental sampling.
Oh, yeah, there are lots of them.
And if you wanna be, what they, what, the first thing you wanna know is how much confidence do you wanna have?
Right, and that's, that's what I'm saying is, that is something that we would have to potentially.
Vicky, can you use that concept a little bit, like, kind of like a compliment?
Well, if you want, okay, well, I'm more familiar with the sample of railroad car feed or something. And I do wanna know with what the, what the average concentration is over, over the whole thing. Uh, even with a hay bale, I mean, if you get a good sample on a hay bale, it's not easy. Uh, and, I mean, how many samples you're gonna have to take, it's a lot. To get, say, if you wanna know within ten percent what the actual concentration is in this whole thing, you gotta take, oh, golly, from a hay bale, I think you have to take thirty samples at least.
Undisturbed, the hay bale or land or whatever it is you work on, yeah.
Sure, and it depends, you know, using my background, it depends also what you are looking for, as was brought up. Are we looking at soil? Are we looking at groundwater? Right, so those are different. You know, if you're surveying for horses, you don't need to survey every three inches because it's a horse. Right, and surveying every three inches would be kind of ridiculous. But then again, if you're surveying for a soil nematode, maybe every three inches is the appropriate, right, you know, survey for a virus or a microbe or something like that. So it, it's very dependent on, you know, I, I, even though I'm familiar with it in my field, I couldn't tell you like, oh, thirty, and do it every square mile. Like, done, check. You know, so I, but I think we need to come up with some sort of idea. So maybe we, maybe we push that one back a little bit and say we wanna do it based on land use.
Well, could we, could we request a, a meeting with some of the environment, with some of the Altamont people?
For the deadline? Or are you saying like just?
To talk about sampling this, that, that, we would like to have some samples, but we request a meeting with some of the Altamont experts.
Until you know what the land use is, you can't meet with people and figure it out because you just don't know the answer to it.
I don't think they really know the land use either.
Yeah, I'm not sure the PRPs know what they're trying to do.
If you drive more home with frankly be extremely unreasonable to demand that we give them an exact number with there being so many unknowns right now, therefore, I don't think we would be reasonable to throw out an opportunity.
Here's my, and I'm just, this is my personal opinion. What I am concerned about is that if we don't put forward a number, their will, their response will just be to continually say, well, you didn't ask us for, you know, like, what do you want? What do you actually want?
What we really want is to sit down.
Can I finish my whole?
Yes, but I think we've answered your question three or four times.
Okay, what I'm worried about is that if we don't submit something by the deadline on what we want, and I'm not saying we have to, I'm just saying this is my concern for argument, for discussion, that if we don't submit what we actually want, which we've been asked numerous times to do so whenever this has been brought up, how many samples would it take to satisfy you? Come up with that number and come back to us. If we don't come up with a number and come back to them, you know, maybe we could say we need another month or so, and that would be fine. But if we don't do that, what I'm concerned is going to happen is they're going to say, we can't wait around for this, or it'd be unreasonable for, the PRPs will claim it's unreasonable for us to wait until the CAG comes up with their number. You should just let us delist it. And my concern is that that may be approved, and there may be a window in which we can't make the perfect enemy of the good.
Why, why don't we?
I'd like to just propose that.
Let me put out a number, either between twenty and fifty. Twenty and fifty soil samples, uh, you could look for explosives, the, the, um, nitro aromatics. I mean, the stuff that they've been doing, and they have a regular test.
Is that twenty or fifty per acre?
Metals are cheap, and I don't think you're gonna find any corn itself.
Are you gonna say?
Nitro aromatics for chlorates and, uh, metals.
Vicky, are you talking about twenty or fifty for the all five hundred and some acres, or are you talking about per acre?
That's not an unreasonable request to do, and that's, that's, but this, my guess is that's gonna cost several hundred dollars to do that much.
Well, they're gonna jump on that like a fly on a suit.
But there's, there's a number.
Okay, there's, so there's one number, I'm just writing it down as, it is a number.
I, I have a problem with, I really have a problem with throwing out a number because for this, you have this concern that if we don't throw out a number, they're gonna say we're being, um, we're being unfair by not throwing out a number, so therefore they can't do anything. I think it's just likely or more likely that if we throw out a number, they're gonna say, okay, what's that number based on? And then we're gonna have to explain ourselves, and we're not gonna be able to. And they're gonna just say, you have nothing to talk about, and move on anyways. So if we can't justify scientifically why twenty, fifty, or five hundred to a thousand, or one?
Okay, justification is it's not an unreasonable demand for analytical chemistry standpoint.
And what are you, underestimating?
Costing a fortune. I mean, it, it, the thousands of things that cost a fortune.
That just has to do, that just has to do with budget. That has nothing to do with chemistry. I don't care, but, you know, the, we wanna know it's safe. We don't wanna know how much.
Well, they say it's safe without any sampling. I mean, they say zero is, is the, is the.
Right, the deed, the, the proposal right now is we're not gonna do any sampling, we're just gonna, we would ask for it to be listed. That's what they have.
Yeah, they said zero.
Zero sampling. We never have done any sampling. We're not planning on doing any sampling. We'd like to do this. There's no need to do sampling. We'd like to delist without any sampling.
If you're gonna throw out a number, you do one per acre, and then, then you're gonna cover it.
Okay.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
Well, that's a lot, but at least you're gonna be in the ballpark of something.
Well, even that, I mean, with this stuff, I mean, you're talking about where one rocket landed? One per acre isn't gonna do it either.
Hey, we wasn't there, so we don't know what happened.
But, you know, and we just don't have the right person in the room, I think, to, to answer this question right now. Somebody's gotta be able to say, some, you know, somebody wrote all these books about environmental and somebody has gone out and, um, you know, there's the, I, I'm sure this gentleman from Altamont is, he's done field work, a lot of, well, maybe not this guy from Altamont, but a lot of consulting firms, they go out and do environmental assessments, EAs on all sorts of things, not just super fun sites. Well, you know, they, they'll go out and they'll, you know, sometimes they'll set up a grid system and they'll walk in and they'll look for, uh, you know, railroad ties that are covered in crease. Or they'll look for a, a barrel of tea and tea, you know, if it's something ridiculous. But they're gonna, they're gonna be looking for things they can see. And then if they see those things, then they'll determine their sampling, um, they'll, they'll do some sampling, but if they see things, maybe they'll do a higher rate of sampling. Um, and, I mean, it's a, it's an environmental assessment on, on the property up there. And no environmental assessment, uh, most of them don't start by saying we're going to go up and take like one sample per acre, you know.
Well, they already did that, just what you're talking about, though.
They've done the targeted sampling.
They, they looked over the whole thing and walked the whole, the whole.
They've done targeted, they, they've done sampling on the.
They have walked and determined that there was no need to do sampling, and so they did not do any sampling. They only did sampling where they thought there was going to be an issue, is what my understanding is.
They went by pictures, they went by, uh, things of history.
They looked for experiments in the past, they looked for.
They was looking for physical eyesight stuff, or where somebody said something might have been located. That, that's still not appropriate just for a visual.
I do think that one per acre is not gonna give you the kind of information that you're after either.
Okay.
Well, then we need to go back to the land use.
What, what, what do you think?
Why, why would you say it's not appropriate, one per acre, then? What's your rationale that it's not appropriate?
Because you, you, it's just too easy to miss. I mean, one per acre, I mean.
It's too coarse of a scale.
It's too coarse, yeah, that's, that's the way. It's just too easy to miss this stuff.
And scale is a big, is a big problem. This is a huge site, and we may be looking for something that's relatively small, so.
I don't know that we'd be unreasonable, uh, Ms. Sarah, that, that way they said it, uh, Alamont was showing that graph of how they dissected that land and come up with the, the scale that they did? Uh, that's the scale that they used. They used that graph. What do you call that a while ago?
They didn't do that. They actually went out and looked for sites that.
No, I'm talking about on the contaminated site itself. Remember the grid, the grid that they did?
That was every forty feet or so, yeah.
Okay, so they, they had a scientific way of doing that because they knew the chemicals was there, so they've got a way of figuring it.
They explained it, or at least the way they explained it in the last meeting was that they did it to a grid sample. They did it, he had a term for it where it's basically, you know, their perception was that they should sample here, so they sampled there.
Well, then they made a grid within this site. They, they have these chunks that they sample every forty feet or something. They were pretty tight.
But not for the whole.
Not for the whole thing, no.
Yeah, yeah, they, they went around and, you know, based upon, um, you know, site and, you know, hunting people, they picked some hot spots and then they did the grid sampling.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, to do, they, but even to do grid sampling over the whole, just the contaminated part, they didn't do that. I mean, that was, that was out of the scope, you know, out of the scope of what they could do. So asking them to do, you know, something that precise up there, I mean, that's even, even more land, so.
It, it's, um, it's, it sounds like this is something, this might be a question that we can send out to the entire CAG and, um, represent those as equally in terms of like what number, what to do with this whole sampling thing.
Yeah, I don't think the question to ask is what number, it's do we need to do?
Do we need a number?
Right, or do we?
Ask them to give them a number.
I, yep, I mean, I can, I can send that out as a question to the whole CAG. I can just tell you, and I know I've said this before, and I know Sean, you've answered this before, what I've been getting back, when I've made this request is, give me a number.
Yes.
So that's the direct, that's, the request has been made.
Yeah.
The response has been, give me a number. And so we can go back and say, can you do this? And I'm pretty positive the still answer will be, give me a number.
What I would, I would quit asking, you know, put push this issue. If we, if somebody, us, whoever, our, whatever our resources are, I, I, I don't know how to do this. If somebody can put together a little. I, I don't know how to do this, if somebody can put together a little report based upon, um, you know, the conditions out there and the potential land uses, um, that they have, are allowing within their deed restrictions, um, and said, you know, literature says, based upon these situations, this is what we should request. Otherwise, we might as well just take a shot in the dark, and if we're just taking a shot in the dark, then we can just go ask anybody, and they would do this for us.
Okay, so I will ask again, who wants to do this?
Exactly, nobody wants to do that, that's why I.
Now, I can, I can get onto the library and dig out those books, and you're gonna be horrified.
Well, you.
If you, if you wanna have any reasonable, um, any reasonable confidence in that your sampling is actually turning up stuff, it's something like this, you're gonna need thousands of samples.
I, I'm just thinking that it, it's, we don't need to, as far to, as far, not just numbers and samples, but, I don't, I think that we should request that we tap into the professional resources and experiences we have out there, Altamont and, and their risk assessment people, and let them help us determine how many numbers, or how many samples it should be. They, they.
They already said zero.
No, I don't think Stu did, no, I don't think Stu did. I think Stu thought this was very reasonable to go out and take some samples. I, I've, I know that.
I've talked to Stu about it.
I think Stu.
Stu, what'd he say?
Stu said that there are different techniques, and they use a different technique in random sampling, they use targeted sampling, which say, my, this is my interpretation of what he said to me a month ago, was that they felt that that was the appropriate method for going about it at this time. They were not involved with the delisting, that came from a different company. So they, they did not prepare anything for the delisting, is my understanding.
They weren't, I don't think they were part of the delisting thing.
Right, so they don't, they were not asked about the delisting thing, but I would suggest, and this is just, again, personal thing, that they would be, Altamont would not want to go on record as recommending anything, because they're employed by, I mean, they're, that's putting them in a very uncomfortable situation to say, Altamont has to do this. Now, we could say, we want to work with Altamont to determine something, that might be possible, but to go to them and say, can you step out of your role as working for them and give us a number, is probably gonna be something that Stu will say, I'm not comfortable with that, I can ask him.
Maybe, maybe we just, that's, that's a, that's a really legitimate point, um, that they work for the PRP that works for us. Maybe we don't ask specifically request to consult with Altamont, but we request to consult with, um, some, some experts provided by, and that expert is, is somebody who, John Bornholm thinks you could just pull out a number, and that's science, that's not science, so we need somebody else who, who's doing it.
I don't think he's saying that pulling out a number would be science, I think what he's saying is what would the community like as a good faith effort to demonstrate that Altamont is doing sampling, and that the PRPs have paid for some sort of effort to determine if this, because we have asked and we have said, we want a good faith effort, and so he is coming back and saying, what, what does that constitute?
The answer from this community member is, I want something that is scientifically sound. I don't want a number, I want something scientifically sound, and I think that's what the community should want, whether they know to ask that question or not, they should want something that's scientifically sound, because eventually, if we just pick a random number, people might be happy with it now, uh, some people might be, some people won't, but given time, people are gonna come to, more people will come to understand, like, wow, twenty or fifty, what was that based on? That was based upon nothing, you know, that, they just pulled that out of a committee meeting when there are seven people sitting in the room. Um, people are gonna want to see some justification, they're gonna want to see some.
Okay, I'll find you some justification, I'll find you what you need to get to within a ninety percent certainty of.
No, no, I don't, I.
It's huge.
Who said anything about ninety percent certainty?
What, what, how, how sure, how sure?
I don't even know what.
How about this, how about this, it is after time, we are supposed to leave, Vicky, can you do some preliminary research on this?
Sure, I can find you some books in the library.
And just let us know, as the researcher, can you do some preliminary research and come up with some numbers that would give us some, some ranges of what we might be looking at for different levels of certainty?
We're not gonna get them, we're.
Well, no.
Well, I'm not gonna get ten percent.
From my field of work, I, I've been, I've worked on EAs on conservation easements bigger than this before, I've worked on a nine-hundred acre one, and, I mean, it's, it wasn't a potential superfund site, I, I give you that, but we, we did sampling up there, and, you know, we weren't talking about thousands, we weren't talking about hundreds, we were talking about.
Okay, then do you wanna come up with another way of doing it, if Vicky's doing that way, since you, you said you know how, you've done it before, you know people who've done it before?
I, I have not done it for potential superfund sources of science.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm getting stuck at, Sean, is that we have a couple weeks to do this.
That's why I'm saying we don't give a number, 'cause we can't come up with a number, we tell them, explain why, we want time, we want the resources to develop that number.
Okay, so your, your proposal is ask them to give us the resources to make our request?
To make a scientifically sound decision, not to help us make up our.
And what resource do you want?
That.
Do you want a book, do you want a graph, do you want a person, do you want a study, what do you want?
Yeah, third party.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that becomes a technical assistance grant.
Right, maybe EPA has somebody they can send that.
I'm fairly certain, and I, I will, I am willing to ask the question, but I'm fairly certain that that is essentially the point of what the tags are, the technical assistance grants. The problem is, those come with strings.
Okay.
And time.
And a lot of time.
Tell them, I would be hap, more satisfied with just saying, we would like to work with Altamont and the potentially responsible parties, whoever, who, I don't care if it's the guy who dumped it himself, you know, if, if they, they've got a lot of resources and knowledge and experience, and they might be willing to share reasonably. I think Stu heard a lot of things that were, it could have been coming from any very reasonable scientific person working for anybody, a lot of the stuff that Stu was saying, I didn't feel like he was trying to cover for the PRPs or anything, and I don't think that, I don't feel like that would happen, uh, in, in, in a situation like this.
I think there's a question that comes out of your concerns is, to me, is, we're working on a piece of property that is superfund site right now. If we don't come up with a scientific way that you're talking about, and I think it's a reasonable way of doing it, then when it's declassified, then if you want something done, it ain't gonna be done as it, to stringent point as it is right now, because they look at it as a superfund site, or connected, connected, but it change it later in a legal matter, probably, so.
I think we need to wrap up here, we need to set some times here for our next meeting, and when is this lady, this person coming?
The proposal is for the same time, but we always have reserved this CAG meeting, which is, the second Thursday is at six-thirty PM, so that was the, that was the proposal for somebody with risk assessment to come talk to us.
In May?
In May. So, that's their offer, EPA's offer, it's on the table, I haven't told them yay or nay, but it sounds like a yay, that people want that.
Is that before the questions are due to be in?
Questions are supposed to be in at the end of this month.
So do we need to get that technical people here so that, in case there's other questions that we need to tie in?
I guess the question we have on this delisting is, how can you justify scientifically delisting the property?
Yeah.
Well, then they said.
That's all it boils down to.
That's what it boils down to, it's not giving them a number, it's just asking the question, they walked the site, which is not scientific.
Well.
Well, what?
Depends on what science you're talking about.
Yeah, well.
They, they said that they were satisfied, that, 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 they, they gave their justification.
Yes, they said their method was targeted sampling based upon whether or not there was visible evidence from photographs, from walking the site, from a variety of things. So that is, that is one potential scientific method of doing it.
They can tell whether there's groundwater contamination in that delisted site by walking it?
No, they're saying they did targeted sampling based on whether or not there appeared to be disturbance, or appeared to be a reason to test in that particular area. So what they're saying is, the assumptions of their method is that there, if there is no visible disturbance that can be seen in either current or historic photographs, then they assume that there is no problem, and they don't test it. And that is, like it or not, a, 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 a method. We, we are saying potentially, what people have said is, we would like you to do more than that.
And they're saying how much more?
And they're saying, how much more would you like? And we're saying, a scientifically reasonable amount more, potentially.
And the girl's saying, what, what is that? How, how, what degree is that, what is you want?
No, that is, that is, that is not what I'm saying, you're just.
Okay, what are you saying, again, do you want to ask them to give us resources to determine scientifically validly what is the number that we should be asking for, 'cause that's what I keep hearing? But we really, we really do need to.
You said scientifically reasonable, is, what's a scientifically reasonable? I, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, we need some experts to talk to us about this process, to let us know, like, okay, based upon the situation up there, if we go out and take twenty soil samples, um, you know, somebody can put a number on it, and this is about how confident you can be. If you go out and take a hundred, this is a.
Vicky, Vicky is hoping to do that.
I'll find you that, and I guarantee you, the number, if you wanna get to even eighty percent confident, it's gonna be huge.
For what contamin, for the contamination levels, not of, it, it.
Are those things listed up here, the nitro aromatics, the?
But, please look for that at, to the concentration levels that are.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, they tested that.
All right, so Vicky is going to look into that and give us some information, I will send stuff out to the CAG membership as a whole, saying, here's what Vicky has found, do we want to ask for a number? Do we want to just say, we need more time? Do we want to ask for them to give us free expert services? I mean, what do we want to ask them for, right? I'm, I'm not gonna write this myself, even though I might have an opinion on it, I'm going to send out the options and, and ask all the members what they want us, what is the voice of the membership to say what we want? Right? So may, maybe it will be, we want experts, or maybe it will be, we want, we want twenty, I don't know, or maybe it'll be, based on Vicky's numbers, we're, you know, we're going for fifty percent. I don't know, right, so, but we need to end this meeting, and we need to move on, and we do unfortunately have a deadline on this, so we can't do this next meeting, we have to, we have to do this by the end of the month. I could also, and I will, send somebody to EPA, I will tell John that we have had considerable discussion about it, and can we have more time? And maybe he will write back and say, sure.
Since they've been taking all year to get their, more than a year to get their, their comment, so I'm.
Right, so I will ask for more time, because it sounds like we could use it, but be aware that we may not, we may not get it. And that'll have to be done via email as best we can.
Well, when you, I have a board meeting, I'll deal with this in a week, God should have, I can dig out some resources out of the library.
So you can have it done in a week?
I can have some stuff, I can show you the sample, the methods, uh, as far as the chemistry of it, soil for those things, is that gonna satisfy you? I mean, it's not groundwater, it's not the biggest thing that's in there, which is the corned salts. It's what you might find up there if you hit a spot where a rocket lands.
Okay. So next Thursday, you can have something on that. So we can try to set up a board meeting, I will have to email the board, 'cause this will be a special board meeting, right, I don't know when people are gonna be available, so we're just gonna have to do this on the fly. I am gone next week, I will be in the field in the outer ranks of North Carolina.
I'm gone next week, too.
Taking students out to see wild horses, I can't, I can't do a board meeting without.
I can email, I can send you stuff out by email, a summary of what the literature says.
No, that's great, I'm just saying, we, we have to table actually scheduling a board meeting, so we can email the board and say, what, can you?
Have we lost a board member?
We have had one board member resign.
And so, she was the one who did the grants, right? Would write the grants.
Did you write the vis-à-vis?
And which stuff? Hmm, the vis-à-vis are all taken care of, she did a lot of work.
Did it ever finalize?
We're bad.
I never got a final draft on that, so hopefully she has done that, and I have asked for that.
But she had a lot there.
She did, yeah, so maybe it's just a matter of getting those files.
Right, so we need to get that, but, yeah, that's a whole other issue, and we will have to, the board will have to decide what we're giving with that, but yes, as of now, we are down one board member.
What's the date of the next meeting?
The next CAG meeting will be the second Thursday in May.
With the lady from EPA?
I don't know if it's a lady, with somebody from EPA. What?
May eighth.
May eighth, great, damn right. So second Thursday in May.